Good morning. Welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners regular meeting on March 8th, 2016. We'll start with the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Mo and Severson, any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Is there anyone here to speak to public comment? No public comment. Before we jump into the consent agenda, just make note that today is International Women's Day. We would like to celebrate the social, economic, cultural, and political achievement of women. As you know, we have a Female Majority Board, so that is our political achievement, but we very much appreciate these two gentlemen here.
Aw, shucks.
And when there's International Men's Day, we'll acknowledge it.
I will, if I may, Madam Chair, say and confess that at the past election, had it gone that there were four women on the board, I was going to dress in drag because I felt that I needed to fit in, so.
It's a good thing you didn't say that before the election, it might have swung.
I am so glad you said that out loud, because you've said that before, so.
Yeah, no, I mentioned it too. Someone at the Forestry Department, she says, "I like you already," so.
All right. Now that we've digressed again, the consent agenda, would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Gamble? And a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mo, any discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Betty?
Recently, the county has been notified of a transfer of land from the Nature Conservancy Group to the Grand Portage Band. And here to discuss that further, we have Jim Manolis from the Nature Conservancy Group, April McQuarrie from the Grand Portage Band, and Gail Llewellyn, who is the Senior Attorney for the Nature Conservancy Group. So with that said, if you have any questions, you can certainly ask them. You should have in your packets the information from Attorney Llewellyn regarding detailed information on the Susie Island transfer, and then with an attached map.
Okay, so just for the record, we have in the packet the Susie Island, and then we have some additions.
We have an additional notification of transfer of four parcels, which are also, you should have received that in your packet. And again, there's a map attached that Kyla prepared.
Okay.
Would you like me to walk through?
If you could, that would be great. Could you introduce yourself?
Certainly. So, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jim Manolis. I'm with the Nature Conservancy. I am Forest Conservation Program Director with the Minnesota Chapter of the Nature Conservancy. So really, thank you for the opportunity to share a little information about this project. As you know, the Nature Conservancy and the Grand Portage Band are, we're working through a process of two, steps that could lead to conveyance of Susie Island to the United States and trust for the band. And we see this as a positive step for conservation of the island. And now where we are in the process is the Bureau of Indian Affairs has requested some information from Cook County and has requested comments from Cook County. So I'll just briefly discuss a few details of this and then entertain questions from, and we all can help with answering questions. So just a little bit, I wanted to give a little bit of perspective on the Nature Conservancy. So we're an international organization, and we work in 35 countries, 50 states. Our mission is conserving the lands and waters in which all life depends. And we tend to take a non-confrontational, pragmatic approach to conservation. And typically, in the past, we bought, we kind of quietly go about our way and buy land and conserve that land. And so that's basically what we did through the 1970s and 80s. We purchased a number of tracts on Susie Island, and some of the tracts were donated as well. And we, you know, it's a very interesting place. It's really a special place. It has a number of rare plants that are actually Arctic plants that are pretty much the only place you can find them is in the Arctic or here, and some of the other locations along the North Shore. And also, it's, you know, just a very pristine location with high conservation values. One of the things, through our management of the land, we have enough, our closest person is in Duluth, and so it's a long ways from where we're able to visit the island and manage it. And so over the years, we had conversations with the band, and we actually, we don't have a boat, we had no way to get out there. We worked with the band just to get out there and visit the island, and we became aware of the fact that the band owns the islands surrounding the Susie Island. And through conversation with the band, we realized it would make more sense from conservation perspective for the band to manage and own the island. And so we went through a number of conversations that led to the idea of the, a trust status for the island. And that's where the conversation is now, or the steps with the Bureau of Indian Affairs. And it, basically, the island will be maintained in the natural state through this process. And the memo has some other details. I think maybe it's just time to have you ask any questions, and if April or Gail want to say anything else.
Sure. Go ahead, everyone. Thank you, Commissioners. The Grand Portage Band is very excited about this opportunity. We see it as a restoration initiative and a unification of ownership of land, you know, within our boundaries. And also, Jim had mentioned too, that it's within our Grand Portage Zone, which is regulated waters that Grand Portage manages. And we also have it zoned as preservation. And so this, no development would occur on Susie Island, and it is intended to be managed in such a way to protect the natural integrity of the island. If you think about it historically, it has a very significant, it's hard to describe in words, but it's very significant to our community and the band as a whole that this is occurring.
Do you have anything to add?
Just the one, you know, as a lawyer, I'm always looking at what the legal restrictions are around things. And as an employee of the Nature Conservancy, I'm very keenly aware of the conservation values that our organization has. And one of the things that impressed me so much about this particular meeting of minds and people is that the Grand Portage Band already has land use regulations in place that cover the whole archipelago of islands, and that manage it in as strict a preservation status as I could have hoped for, you know, in terms of the unique characteristics that Jim is talking about for this particular property. So I'm very confident that the kinds of conservation values that the Nature Conservancy originally acquired these lands for would be continued under Grand Portage management. That's my key point.
Thank you. Norman, did you want to add anything?
No, I mean, just briefly, I think everybody's kind of expressed how we as a band feel about this. That island out there, as Gail said, and we go back about 30 years when she was with the.
DNR.
DNR, State of Minnesota, so we've been on opposite sides of some issues, but.
We're always proud of it.
Yes, yes. Glad to see her when she got involved. No, I think Gail said it right, that, you know, our interest is pretty much the same out there. You know, we're going to manage that property the way they are, and it's, as April said, it's zoned as preservation. Nothing will happen out there. The band doesn't want that, any kind of development or that kind of thing, to preserve those islands and make sure that our kids and grandkids can look at that island and see the same thing we're seeing now. So I just want to say, you know, this is a good day for us, taking, you know, getting that property back and ownership with the band, and, you know, we can quibble about what's going to happen there, but I think this is a good day for us in that we, when we announced this to our band members, they were all excited about that because they look at it as theirs, and they use that area in that way and take care of it, so we can continue to do that, so.
Thank you, Norman. Just for the record in the public, that's Norman Desha. He's our tribal leader in Grand Portage. So we will move to questions. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just from my own part of vision, I just want to say thank you for coming today and explaining all of this and answering your questions. It's very nice. It's helping understand exactly what this day means, and I appreciate it. So the other islands are held in trust by the federal government for Grand Portage as well. So this will be exactly the same. It'll just encompass the big island, Susie, as well as the others, Susies.
That is correct. And actually, I brought a figure that the Nature Conservancy map that you received is just a little bit outdated, but most of the reservation, and this is a very tiny map, but most of the reservation, almost 98%, is either held by the band in trust, by individual members, or in fee by the Grand Portage Reservation. And that map is from 2004, so there are some updates. But I think when you visually take a look at the map, it really illustrates that there's been many, many opportunities and a lot of hard work on behalf of the band to reacquire parcels that have gone out of band ownership in the past history, so.
If I may add, Commissioner, there are actually, the Susie Island is about 142 acres, and just sort of off the corner of it, there's another little landmass that's maybe three acres, excuse me, or four, excuse me. And the Nature Conservancy also owns that area, which is called Island One. And when our, it's that significant.
Pretty exotic.
Yeah, pretty exotic. It's actually so small that it kind of gotten, got forgotten when the person that needed to go out onto the property to look around and evaluate it, to present a report to the BIA, was out and looked around Susie Island, but failed to step foot on Island One. So we actually, the Conservancy owns it. We intend to convey it to the band in the same way, but we can't do it right now because the report of the surveyor does not include Island One. So actually, we'll be back once more. I don't want you to be surprised, but we'll be back for Island One, or maybe, you know, maybe we won't need to appear, and you'll just see the letter from the BIA, which, whatever your preference is. But there will be two separate parts to this.
That makes sense, that I'll be one, including them, for sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Gable?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I have two questions, and then some comments for just informing public and fellow Commissioners on this transaction. My first question is, when Island One reverts to the tribe, will the tribe rename Island One, something a little more like?
I don't think I can answer that.
Yeah, well, anyway. And the other is, when the Nature Conservancy as a matter of practice has holdings, that that land becomes accessible to public. And in this transference, then, maybe just the question is to public access because that section of islands, as I understand it, have been basically for the benefit of our tribal nation and not public access. So just that question.
So the, as the Nature Conservancy has owned that land, it actually has had restricted access because of the fragile nature of that, the plants and the community there. And so it's basically a permission-only access. And so, you know, I think, you know, the band will manage it as they see fit, but Gable, you may want to speak to that, but it is, it is a fragile system. It's not a place where you want a lot of people walking around and, but it's, you know, there's access, you know, no limited access to boat nearby and that kind of thing, but it's a permission basis to go out on the island. And the Nature Conservancy has its varying policies on access. In general, we have public access to our properties, but where there's very fragile systems and communities, we usually have restricted access.
And actually, what's unique about this relationship between the band and the Nature Conservancy is the Nature Conservancy has always respected the band's sovereign authority to manage this area, and so has really worked very closely with, Jim mentioned, the permission or the restricted access. And so it's almost like it's a delegated, you know, authority that we've had, even though the Nature Conservancy has essentially owned the island itself. So I just wanted to highlight that, that there's always been that respect that's given to the band as far as management or visitation. And often, we run requests through the tribal council if there's some reason that there need be a study done on the plant species in Susie Island, or some type of environmental or biological reason that we need to go visit the island. So I just want to note that.
And as I understand it, before the board today, then, we have the trust lands, which the transference back into the federal trust under the jurisdiction of the Grand Portage Tribe. And then we have additional parcels which are linked to the land buyback program that came as a settlement. Is that, the additional parcels, are they Nature Conservancy parcels as well?
Actually, this should be considered two separate kind of projects itself. I mean, they're, they're unique in that they are both a notice from the Bureau of Indian Affairs, letting local government, including the governor and Minda, know that we have submitted application for trust for these parcels. And so these parcels themselves are not related to the land buyback program, but are parcels that we've acquired over time, that we've held privately as the Grand Portage Band of Lake Superior Chippewa. So the next step would be going ahead and putting those parcels into trust. So if that makes sense, and.
Thank you. Just maybe if I can help to, the land buyback program is for allotments only, and what it does is there's a pot of money set aside for, we have many allotments up there that have hundreds of owners. We have like a 40-acre lot, it'll be 300 or 400 owners of that, undivided interest, which means that if you own one-tenth of that, you can't designate your one-tenth anywhere. So what it does is basically makes that piece of land unmanageable, because in order to put a timber sale or do anything with it, you need at least 51% of the owners to okay. And in most cases, it's almost impossible to get that, so it kind of sits in limbo. And if you look at this, if you own one-tenth of a 40 acres, or even one-sixtieth, that you can't define, who's going to buy that from you? What value does it really have? So that's where the land buyback came program, and is for buying shares of these allotments to consolidate ownership. So it makes it more manageable by the band or the Bureau, or whoever wants to manage it, primarily the band. So, and makes those shares bigger so something can be done with it. Plus, it's, it's an avenue for people who do want to sell. The only real entity that's going to even want to buy that would be the band, because it, like I said, it has no value to an individual buyer. They really can't do anything with it, so. That's what that land buyback program is.
Yeah, thank you, Norman. And looking at that, that resulted as, in regard to the settlement, which took place in 2009, and the money that was allocated for that buyback was 1.9 billion. And looking at the tribes, there are 245,000 approximate owners throughout the country amongst all the tribes that have that factual ownership, as you described. And the Grand Portage, as far as those number of owners that have indicated that they'd be willing to sell, almost about 7.4% of the tribe have indicated that. And so I guess, you know, as Commissioners looking at our county as a whole and understanding the provisions that are available to Grand Portage Tribe as we're managing land and getting it consolidated, and seeing these opportunities. As to the land trust that exists, just some understanding on that, the title, "Most of the tribal lands in the United States is held by the United States Government in trust for the benefit of existing and future generations of tribal populations." The government has a responsibility under this trust in two broad areas, property-oriented duties to protect tribal property and assets, and honor the guarantee of self-government and that tribal lands must be preserved as a base for Native cultures. Currently, there are 566 federally recognized tribes that hold more than 50 million acres of land, which is approximately 2% of the United States. There are a few basics of Native American trust land that are true for all tribal lands held in trust. One aspect to understand is that trust land falls under tribal government authority and is not subject to state law. There are two ways to hold title on Native American lands, and in this particular situation as before us today, the land is the tribe itself having control over all or certain portion of the land on the reservation. So often, things come before us as a board, and we, we look at instances where we're losing local jurisdiction, and we have to defer that to an entity that is removed from our local jurisdiction. And just looking at this, this is working the way we would like to see things work, is that the people that know the land, know the area, have an invested sense of value and stewardship responsibility. Local jurisdiction is a good thing.
Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your work on this, all of you. I'm very pleased that these transactions are going on. I think it's a celebratory day here for the Cook County Board. And the history here is very positive, too, that this board has historically been very supportive of land consolidation in Grand Portage, at least to my knowledge. And we would, as long as I'm here, and I think the board agrees, that we would like to continue that. There's 98%, you know, it'd be nice to work towards 100, and as long as that's the board, the Grand Portage Band will, I would like this board to be supportive of that. I don't have any questions, but if the board is ready, I'd be willing to make a motion to support the land transfer from Nature Conservancy of the Susie Islands and the other parcels to be put in trust. And I would appreciate the rest of the board's support.
I'll second that. Eche.
I was going to only say, because my wife and I own property and little pigeon base, so as far as the ecological environment and the temperature and all those kinds of things, we're very familiar with it.
I understand.
Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I just, that's okay. I just want to say thank you. We really appreciate, this has been a long, you know, a long, one of our, the top priorities, buying land back as much as we can on the reservation. We kind of have to swallow when we say that, too, because we're buying our own land back with resources now that are probably 100 times what they were back then. So we appreciate your support, and just to say that, this has been a longstanding priority of ours, and we thank you for being on our side on this one.
You might not always feel it, Norman, but we're on your side.
Thanks for making the trip, too.
Yeah, thanks, you guys.
The Nature Conservancy really appreciates your support as well, and this is a really important day for us as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Betty.
Thanks, Betty.
Okay, now it's exciting, but let's move on to legislative priorities.
Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to read the resolution included with the board packet. And hopefully, that reflected the conversations that we've had over the past several weeks. Were there any questions about how anything ended up getting worded on there? I wanted to thank Sue Futter and David Betts for their help in assembling these items. And if there are any questions on how that's laid out before we finally approve that, or if there are other things that we missed or ran into in this process?
Commissioner Mo?
No. Madam Chair, thank you, Jeff, and Dave, and Sue for putting this together. To my understanding, it reflects the priorities that we've outlined in our board discussions that we will both take down to the legislature this weekend and also continue to advocate for throughout this legislative session. So I'm grateful to have it consolidated. It's nice that we're going to be all on the same page. You know, we know what we're advocating for, and we can go down and raise some hype now.
In an organized way.
Of course.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you, Jeff, for putting it together and for discussing those things with our department heads so that we can both empathize and understand exactly what we're advocating for. So I appreciate it. I did take the liberty to send it to Representative Eklund. We have some, from various boards that we sit on, we get a number of little talking points, and this is consistent with those talking points. I think the PILT, other than the County Aid Fund, is one of the things that we'll be talking about, that we have some mechanism for PILT to move with inflation and that they hold to that commitment. But Rob did respond and said that, and I sent him my email to him, that the fact that he has sat at the table on many of these discussions, he certainly knows us and what we advocate for, and he said that he's in support of those things, certainly. So, thank you.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Jeff, for putting this all together, and thank you, Dave, for your input, and thank you, Sue, for your input. I just have one question that I just don't quite understand, and it's not that I'm opposed to it, but if somebody could explain it to me. The Cook County opposes the reallocation of existing non-transportation-related general fund dollars from other state funding obligations to transportation.
Dave, can you?
I'll take a quick stab at it. But Dave, if I miss, let me know.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Basically, what that's asking for is that we want, we want transportation funding to be designated funding and not for it to be temporarily coming from another pot, I believe. Is that what that is saying?
Yeah, pretty much. Is that the, is that the statement from the, or from the?
AMC.
AMC?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot of debate about doing, oh, there's debate anywhere from one-time funding, from like surpluses and things like that, to sales tax, just reallocating some of the sales tax to transportation. And this is important to the highway engineers, too. We have a similar, we have our own, highway engineers have our own legislative platform, and it's very similar to ours. And basically, what we need is, is like the gas tax is dedicated so that the legislature can't rob from us for that. So that's the big thing, is that whatever's there is dedicated and nobody can reach into the pot and start balancing the budget with the highway dollars, and that's what we're shooting for.
So my confusion is? So, my confusion is, I mean, this feels like we don't want the general fund to be robbed to go to transportation. And that seems like, don't, don't we want the general fund to?
Madam Chair, and to this point, there's, there's, always this debate has been going on for a long time. Do we raise new revenue by increasing the gas tax? Or do we, do we take some of either one-time money when we have a surplus or dedicate a portion of an other funding stream to transportation? Those other funding streams currently go to other things that we might benefit from too, health and human service funding. So, if we, if we take this money immediately or long-term, put it over here for our highway budget, then that means that we're going to feel it someplace else.
Got it. So, in other words, it's just to have it clear what funding is for what purpose. That's really what this is about. We oppose funding that gets taken from one pot and put into another pot without our input, sir?
It, it's basically asking that transportation funding be designated.
Okay, so that not be robbed?
So that, well, no, but it's also saying that we don't want temporary funding for transportation, that we want, that we want the, the transportation funding to be defined.
Got it, and consistent.
And consistent, so, because you know the nature of, of planning for transportation is long-term.
Yes.
And to, to make all of that contingent on the ability to, to use special funding here and there is, is inconsistent with those goals.
So, I would just rework that sense, not for us, for this week, but I mean, this sense is confusing to me. It might be confusing to other people.
And, and you have to actually look at that in the context of the larger document.
Got it.
And everybody, and people are reading that in the context of the larger document, so there's a little more, there's a little more before and after.
Okay, take that context, it doesn't, yeah.
If I can give a, a really great example is the motor vehicle sales tax. If you remember when we had the constitutional amendment to dedicate that. In the, in the past, there had always been a law stating that it was supposed to go, motor vehicle sales tax was supposed to go into the, get into highways. And the legislature just always kind of exempted it year after year after year almost. And so, that's why we went, that's why we went the route of the constitutionally dedicated motor vehicle sales tax on that. And that's, that's kind of that same kind of example of, that's a really, actually a really great example of, of why we want this dedicated and it's because, as Jeff said, this is, you know, we're planning five, 10 years out and, and if we don't have, if we don't know what our revenues are going to be, we can't plan for, for what it's going to be. Our one-time funding is our bond, excuse me, our one-time funding is our bonding. And that's hard enough to do, as you know, with the bridges, we've, I, I can't schedule them because I don't know if there's going to be bonding or if we're, or if there's, or if there's going to be enough or if we're going to get selected. So, so although I'm very, very grateful for any bridge bonding or any of the bonding that they do, it's, it's just hard to plan.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell, do you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Moll certainly has had experience with this, but the, when, when the legislator is, is looking at funding and, and when we look at surpluses or we look at downturns in, in revenue, then we're, we're constantly making decisions set upon basis of priorities, and it makes it very difficult for department heads to plan, as David suggests, when we have this moving target. And so, when you have a disciplined commitment recognizing that there is a cost associated with infrastructure when it comes to the highway department, that we just want to know what can we count on? And I, I don't think that we're not saying, given the fact that we've been latent in providing that constant, that if we had a surplus and say, you know what, we're going to take a part of that surplus and set it aside and try to catch up on some things, we're not opposed to that. But we, we need to know that there is a dedicated funding mechanism. And in the past, there's been dedicated funding mechanisms that the legislature says, well, we need to get some money and we take it someplace else, and that just makes the department go crazy because we can't, we don't have anything that's reliable.
Dave, anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, the one thing I forgot to send to Jeff, and sorry about that, Jeff, Jeff had sent me an email while I was out at a meeting and, and my phone does not allow me to send emails anymore for some reason. I gotta unfortunately have to do a reset on it, and I'm resisting that. So, anyway, so I, I was texting Lisa to send an email to Jeff. So, but the one thing I forgot about was is, again, in the bonding, in the, at least in the governor's bonding proposal, there's no money set aside for Bowser Wetland Bank. So, if we can, if you guys can just kind of keep that when you're talking to legislators and things like that, the Bowser Wetland Bank for transportation purposes is extremely important to us. It saves us having to go out, go out and actually go get wetlands or mitigate wetlands. So, we can just buy from the bank or obtain from the bank, and that's very, very important to us when we're trying to do these projects, especially the stuff we're doing now. I mean, Sawville was basically built, and we still had a wetland permit. We impacted like 5,000, 5,000 or 8,000 square yard, or square feet of wetlands just because we were putting riprap at the ends of, of the culverts, which is, they consider an impact, which drives me crazy because it's good for the environment, so why are we getting punished for it? But regardless, so even that little bit helps every time, and we just, we sail through with, with wetland permitting, or, well, that's maybe an overstatement on sailing through, but, but it makes everything a lot easier.
We need to.
Yeah.
When you get back to the office where you have an email that sends, can you send each of us the talking point so we get it right when we, we don't say it incorrectly?
Bowser Wetland Bank is very important to us.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, yeah, just to that point, David, that the Arrowhead counties, I think that's one of the things that we've identified on our little cue cards, so.
And that, and that Bowser initiative is on the AMC platform as well.
And then, one other really quick thing that I'm hearing from the, some people in the legislature, and Commissioner Campbell and I talked about it. One of the ways that they're talking about doing some things, and I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with it as far as saving for transportation, is, is, is efficiencies and MINDOT and things like that. That's great, and I, I mean, trust me, I'm the first person on board that says MINDOT needs to be more efficient. But, the problem is, is that doesn't help the counties and the, and the cities. And they're, they're talking about transportation, and it seems like the focus is on MINDOT, and I think, I, I'm having a feeling that the legislature forgets that when we have the, the gas tax fund or the motor vehicle sales tax or all the stuff that goes into our state aid allocations, they forget that that's not just MINDOT. That's, that's state, that's all the counties, all 87 counties, and then, and then the, however many, however many municipal state aids cities there are. So, we kind of, we're kind of getting, in some people's discussions, I'm, I'm worried that they think that we're just fund MINDOT, and that they forget that it's the counties and the cities that also rely on that funding.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dave, so is, do you think that the discussion is, is maybe, a lot of times politicians, we will try to demonize an agency, we, they need to clean up their act before, as an excuse not to fully fund them. Is this, do you think that's really what's going on here?
I, I don't know for sure. I, I hate to put bad motives on them for that. I mean, certainly there's, there are efficiencies that can be, that can be made in, in all governmental agencies. The problem is, is that I think that, first of all, the efficiencies that, let's, if we, if we're going to pick on MINDOT, while I'm sure that they can probably come up with 10% savings or something like that, we're only talking 10% savings. We're not talking about the funding gap that, you know, for us, for us, that number's somewhere between 30 and 50 million dollars of backlog projects that we, that we should be doing right now, and that's a massive amount of money on a, you know, our, our stated allocation is 3 million a year. 40% of that, 40% of that goes to maintenance, so it's, so really our construction dollars is about 1.6 million dollars a year, so.
Eliminating a few water coolers in MINDOT's not going to do it?
No, no, it's, no, it's certainly not. So, and MINDOT's got a much worse problem than we do. Their, their, well, their system's much larger and they have a lot more manly miles and a lot more bridges than we do, and so, so yeah, so that's, you know, that's, I, I agree with that, that thought process, that there's other ways to do some things, but what I'm mostly worried about is, is that the cities and counties are getting left behind on this, so.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah. The, the discussion is, is that if the legislature is prone to look at MINDOT as being the savior to deal with the, you know, the highway, you know, the roads and our infrastructure, then they're very limited in their discussion because while it's good to find economies of scale or be more efficient with dollars, you need to look at the whole thing. And if there's a tendency on legislators to feel comfortable that they're advocating because they focus on that one area, they're missing the bigger picture.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions, Paul?
Oh, don't over that, Paul.
How much time you guys?
Boy, we just, we just left it on the wide open.
At least two smiling.
Nope, we're happy, we're comfortable.
This is great, thanks. So, okay.
We just need money.
Thank you.
That's the message, we just need money.
Yes. Can I get a motion on the legislative priorities?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move that we as a board recognize the list as presented to us as our Cook County legislative priorities for the 2016 legislative session.
Can you have a second? A second. Commissioner Seibertson? Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, Jeff, community planning and health.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the save the date flyer that you have in here is from the Active Living Group, and this is a, a function that they're putting together to try to get community leaders and policymakers to think about community health-related issues as we're, as we're formulating policy. So, these are the kinds of conversations that we have in a lot of our meetings that don't necessarily translate directly in the policy, but they're asking us to consider, these are the conversations that we have, so when we do make a policy, we take into consideration health if we can, or we can see the benefit of, of doing that. So, this event on March 23rd at 5:30 at the Arrowhead Center for the Arts is actually something that's being sponsored by the Bush, Bush Foundation, and it's the theater of public policy and their professional, or nonprofit improv group out of Minneapolis, so it should really be entertaining and engaging. And they really are hoping, I shared this with the department heads at our mat meeting yesterday, they're really hoping for participation from the city and the county and the other policymakers. So, as you can see, we put that on the agenda today as a place that we're hoping that we have a forum of this body at that event. They do ask for an RSVP, so later this week, probably this afternoon, I'll send out a notice to the commissioners and to the department heads again, asking them to please RSVP for this event so that we know that we're going to be well represented there.
Any questions?
No, great, thanks for bringing that.
I, I know that David Demmer and the upcoming Trails Plan is going to be one of the topics of conversation that's going to be woven into this evening.
Nice, nice.
Sherry and I have already responded, yes.
And I too.
Okay. And just for the public record, there may be a quorum of commissioners attending the What the Health at the Arrowhead Center for the Arts in Grammeria, March 23rd at 5:30 PM. Okay, Emily is not in yet, so let's move on to Commissioner Concerns reports needing to know. Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A reminder and a, and a notice, a reminder that Cook County Trails Plan public comment period is ongoing, that, that Trails Plan is available on the county website. There will be also a public meeting, a public input meeting on the 17th, 6 o'clock, right here, in the county board room, so I appreciate, we need your input, probably do. So, if you have any, again, that information's online, contact David Demmer, he's the, our staff lead on the project. Also, there is going to be a public meeting, I think I might have been incorrect, or maybe my planner out here.
It's March 15.
Yeah, March 15, thank you.
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
In this room?
In this room.
Or is it 5?
No, it's 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM, this room, thank you.
I have another meeting at 5:00 in this room, so I'll still be here.
Right. Maybe bring extra treats.
Okay.
So.
They'll be gluten-free, soy-free.
So, 15, extraction, take, take that back. But on this, on, on the 18th, Friday, 6 o'clock, there is a, going to be a meeting for people in Hovland and Colville who are interested in local history and our historical assets. We had, this conversation was kind of jump-started by the ARDC's plan for the Hovland Dock, and many of us, there were a lot of people showed up for those planning meetings, and we realized that we probably should have had a larger conversation before about, about the historical assets on the east end of the county more broadly. And there are a lot of people that have expressed interest in being part of a working group. This is being, being held jointly by myself, the county board member, and Cook County Historical Society is supporting, Karen McQ will, will be there also. We've tried to identify everybody who has expressed interest in this and sent out emails inviting them. Advertisement will be on Boreal, we will put up posters. It will be at Hovland Town Hall Friday, the 18th, 6 o'clock. It is written down here, so I got that one right. And if you have any questions, you can, you can contact me on my email or phone number, those things are also online.
Any other, Commissioner, Commissioner Seibertson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, the Northeast Waste something, 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 N-E-W, N-E-WAC. I can't remember what the rest means.
That would hurt.
But anyway, it's a regional, we get together, we talk about solid waste, and we talk about recycling. And the issue that came, that involved the whole group is we decided as a group to send a letter to the state, asking that, which isn't particularly an issue for us here, but I will be bringing something, Tim's going to draft something for me to bring, to advocate for the states, or for, for the rest of these groups need to, currently, for electronic waste, manufacturers are required to pay a bit toward the electronic waste, but it's all based on weight. And so, and I forget what that's called, but since the new, the new TVs are lighter, they're not necessarily paying their fair share anymore because the, what's being recycled now are the old, really heavy, big-bodied TVs. So, so the letter's just going to be supporting, it's going to be in support of, of making that based on something other than just, oh, wait, so that they're still paying their fair share toward the recycling of these heavy objects.
So, it is, it is N-E-WAC.
It is N-E-WAC. It is, it is N-E-WAC. Yeah, I just can't remember what the letters stand for. So, anyway, I will be bringing that for us as a board to send a letter as well.
Good, thank you. Updating on meetings, just so the public's aware, and we'll mention this a few times, when it comes to your property taxes and your evaluations and everything, and the different meetings we have on that, everyone gets a bit confused. So, Betty is going to have an informational meeting for the public to answer some of the questions on your property tax statement, and that will be April 5th at 6:00 PM in this room, and there will be updates on that also, and we'll put reminders out, but we're trying to be a little bit more proactive and make it a little easier for folks to understand that process. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, to that point, I spoke with Betty this morning, and there will be a meeting which will be for the, the west end, and then we'll also have a meeting the following night, which is Tuesday, that will be here, which will be.
It'd be nice to get that updated. Commissioner Campbell, are you ready to do interview tomorrow?
Do you want to do it, or?
Um, I'll be driving to Duluth, so I can stop on the road.
I mean, do you want to, because I took it for you last week, I mean, I'll do it if you can't, but if you, you don't have to see my face twice in the road, but.
I know, I just made an appointment at night in Duluth, so I just, I can't.
I'll do it.
I, I know I said I'd trade, I'll trade for you another time, sorry.
Commissioner Campbell will be on.
I've got two tabs.
This'll give the News Herald time to put an ad in for you.
Stop it. Jeff?
Shall I keep that?
Do you have an item?
Um.
Molly?
Yes, I just wanted to briefly inform the board that the county attorney's office is, is going to institute, or we're gonna start a septic compliance enforcement program to clean up about 90 properties that have non-compliant septic systems. So, last year, we did not pursue any enforcements at the request of this. we did not pursue any enforcements at the request of the zoning department because they were, you know, kind of rethinking or transitioning their programs. But, so, we're going to be, and I wanted to let the commissioners know because you might be hearing from property owners who are hearing from us, putting the pressure on to fix failing systems. We're going to pursue this by creating a database of all the property owners so that we can track correspondence that we're mailing to them and the responses that we get from property owners and from Mitch Iverson and from the contractors themselves. We're going to set a deadline for about, we're picking the oldest 50 of these properties and pursuing compliance on those properties first this year. And we're going to set a deadline this summer for those properties. If we don't have progress towards compliance that is significant enough by that time, then we're going to start pursuing court actions against them. So, you can probably tell from the way I'm describing this that it's going to create quite a bit of workload for our office.
Yeah.
So, in order to take care of that administratively, I'm going to be upping Leah Ekstrom's hours to 40 hours a week from 35 hours a week. We have money in our budget to do that from forfeiture and prosecution fees, funding, and also now that Carla Hill has left and won't be paid for the entire, we won't have anyone in that position at least through March. That's going to cover the added hours for the remainder of the year. So, we're kind of in consulting with the zoning department and Jeff, we're kind of seeing this as a two-year program to attempt to catch up on all of those system inspections. So, I'm going to be requesting additional money in our budget for next year to cover that additional five hours a week for Leah Ekstrom. So, I just wanted to let you know the general idea of what we will be doing, probably sending out our first correspondence in, maybe by the end of March, but likely the first half of April. And you can let me know if you have any questions or concerns about that.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, my couple of questions. Those, obviously, those people who will receive notice that enforcement action is coming will still have the existing resources, you know, they can fix the problem, they can, they have access to the septic loan program, you know, so those fixes are not taken off the table.
No.
Right, we're just adding a little additional incentive for them.
That's right, that's right. You know, the correspondence, the warning letters have not worked coming from the zoning department, so we kind of have to step it up. But certainly, our goal is not punishment, our goal is compliance, because it doesn't do any good to slap somebody with a huge fine or, you know, I don't know, put them on probation or in jail or something for a failing septic system because you come out on the other end and you still have a failing septic system, and that is, you know, potentially harming the environment.
The other question is in regards to, you had talked about a court fee that you, that could be charged.
Oh, right.
And to recover some of your court costs. Have you decided on how to proceed with that?
Yeah, I think that we will attach some kind of a standard prosecution fee for all of the cases that end up in court, because that, you know, escalates the resources immensely that our office has to spend. So, yeah, that could be one way to recover some of the expense of the enforcement program. I haven't decided how much that may be, and it may be different for different cases depending.
Thank you.
And just a little bit for the board, maybe this will help answer some of your questions. This will be the first Thursday conversation. So, there will be a public conversation on WTIP at 7:00 in April, so hopefully the notices correspond with that information session. And these are, these are people that have had two years to do something. You know, a lot of them, we didn't say, you have two years, it must be done, it must be complete. We've given them two years to pick up the phone and start making phone calls and getting things set up to fix their systems. And most of these are well beyond that deadline.
That's right, yeah.
So, you know, in planning and zoning has made phone calls and sent out letters, and contractors have tried to work with them, and so it's, we've done everything we can. And so now, we have to up it a little bit to the next step, so. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Molly, when you say oldest, are you referring to oldest in the queue or oldest systems?
I mean, oldest in the queue, so they've had the most amount of time to fix the problem. Their inspections happened.
Okay. And I know when we were going through, you know, our septic ordinance update and then, you know, the discussions, different things, we were, as a county and as department in planning and zoning, doing whatever we could in conjunction with the state of Minnesota to make flexibility within our ordinance, and yet still comply with the intent of the ordinance, which is to protect our groundwater. And so, in many things, to the point that the public is aware that the authorities that make these decisions and affirm these ordinances are working to try to be both empathetic to, you know, the costs and things associated with this, and yet protective of, you know, the environment, that has been our intent, and it has been demonstrated throughout this process in the language of that ordinance. It became evident that when we were aggressive and going, aggressive, what I mean is we had money to be able to go around and lakes and inspect, and so we were getting an awful lot of response, that we wouldn't have had that same volume had we not had money to help us do that. That puts your department in a position of, wow, this is a lot to have to deal with. And so, I guess where I'm going with this is that to the extent that it perceived that we have been lax in our responsibility in making sure that there's compliance, and now also we're going to jump on it, that is not the case based upon the conversation we had today. We've been more than lenient, and we have to ratchet it up another level. My next question would be if you have talked to other counties in similar situations as to how they proceeded and what they've done, and if there's any fee associated. And I think if you connect the dots, if we have to budget additional dollars for staff to handle this issue because of non-compliance, that goes back on the taxpayer. So, accountability from the standpoint, if you want to reduce your tax burden, then comply, and we won't have to hire additional staff to get compliance.
That's an interesting way to look at it, yeah.
Part of reality.
I mean, yeah, to hold the individuals who are non-compliant accountable.
And I appreciate the fact that our intent isn't to be punitive in this measure. We have a responsibility, and we try to be as gracious as we can and help and provide low, you know, income or low funding, you know, loans to be able to do, low interest. So, we just need a partnership in this and.
And not all of the non-compliance is your whole interior system failed, you need to start over. There are different levels of non-compliance. So, you know, it's not a, having to fix your system is a burden of some sort, it's just like when your car breaks down, it's a burden. But it's not, we're not asking everybody to have a $45,000 fix. There's different levels. And so, it's unfortunate that it's to this point.
Well, you look at its impact, you know, we just had in a week ago, I think, in the newspaper that Lake Michigan, they want to tap into Lake Michigan and draw water out of there to deal with the fact that groundwater is polluted elsewhere for various reasons. But this whole issue is, the intent of the ordinance is to protect, you know, the quality of the water that is healthy for residents and healthy for the community. So, if when that doesn't get dealt with, then we have to take, in some measure, extreme response.
Jan, anything?
No, I just, thanks for doing that. And I know you're always really busy, so it's going to be tough to fit.
Well, I'm hoping that most people can come into compliance just based on, you know, conversations and correspondence and guiding them towards a septic loan and guiding them towards zoning for their permits and that kind of thing. I'm very much hoping that we don't have, you have to burden the court system with a bunch of cases.
And Madam Chair, Molly, that if there's a.
I'm done.
If there's, if there is a court fee or something, that that should be identified in the correspondence right up front, so it's not a surprise.
Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just got an update from Betty in the assessor's office, so I just wanted one more time to clarify, because we're adding, we're adding stuff to the equalization process this year. The informational meetings, the first one is going to be at the board meeting on March 22nd. And that'll be our workshop for the month of March will be, and the informational meeting is really going to be Betty and Todd presenting information about the process. There's going to be very little time at the board meeting, there will be time for questions. But at the public informational meetings, it's going to be an explanation of how the process works. So, we will have meetings then on March 30th at 6:00 PM in the courthouse, April 4th at 6:00 PM at Luton Town Hall, and April 6th at 6:00 PM at Hovland Town Hall. So, those will be the informational meetings, where we're going to present information about how the process works and not answer questions, because that's what the boards are for two weeks later. So, really, this is just to provide general information, how to read your statement, how the process works, what your opportunities are, when your opportunities are. So, I want to make sure that we're trying to be clear, we're going to have something in the newspaper regarding that. She's also saying that these ads will be in the newspaper and they'll be on boreal. So, we'll try to be as clear as we can about what people can expect at each of these meetings. And then the last note I wanted to make, I guess several, several meetings ago, the board approved me applying to be on the Board of Directors for Northeast Service Cooperative, and I got confirmation about 10 days ago that I will be on that board. So, my first meeting with them will be later this month.
Awesome. I was kind of wondering if Betty's got a camera in here somewhere that she, you know, I announced her meeting and she said the correction right away, it's a little spooky. Commissioner Gamble?
Jeff, can you send an email then just to clarify those?
Betty did.
So, we all got that.
Yep.
She said she was going to do it this morning.
Yeah, you all got the same, she just set the last date and time with Commissioner Moll at the beginning of this meeting, and so everybody got the same email that I just read.
Yep, we all got it. Okay, under correspondence, we have an action item, electronic site agreement. Anybody?
Is that Brady's airport?
No. WDSC WRPT pursuant terms of electronic site agreement between Cook County and Duluth Superior Area Educational Television Corporation, dated the 14th day of September 1999, wishes to exercise its option to renew the agreement for additional period of five years. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I guess my question is, given it's an actionable item, and that's the extent of which we've got, if we had something to explain, what is it?
Table it till the next meeting?
I think if it's not time-sensitive, it would be good to have some background on it before we.
Yeah, I agree.
Can we table it?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move back to the next meeting. Did the bus stall or something, kids?
Whoa, what do you think like that?
They're trying to stall, aren't they, guys? Come forward!
It's Cook County time.
You were exactly right, 95.
96, getting in trouble?
Yeah.
Here, you guys can spread out.
People here to come into the room and acclimate.
These people are so common.
Introduction, please.
I'm Ivan Burschim, I'm Chair of the Cook County Community YMCA Advisory Council.
Emily Marshall, I'm Director of the Cook County YMCA.
Chris Francis, President and CEO of the Duluth Association of YMCA's.
Hi, thanks for having us. This is exciting to be here and to share good news. So, I'm hoping that you all have this document in your packet, yes? So, I'd like to just start with our 2015 Community Impact Report, just to share some highlights from the past year, and then we can go over some updates and goals for next year. But some of the highlights, if you open it up, you can see that we have raised, it was about $34,000 in grant, in community donations this year for our annual campaign, which was, our council worked really hard on that, and it was a really great accomplishment, and then had about $20,000 worth of grants that we received this year for our programming. We have still holding around 1,600 members, a little over 1,600 members, and retention has been really solid, really strong, and we'll continue to focus on member retention in the next year. Something that I thought was impressive, almost 7,000 out-of-town visitors this year, which was a huge increase from the previous year. So, people are coming back and they're bringing their friends, which is great. 88,000 visits in 2015, that's about, almost about 250 visits a day that we have people coming in through the facilities. We have got about 70 volunteers currently serving at the YMCA. On average, it's about 7,000 hours that the volunteers are serving for our YMCA, which is about a savings of about quarter of a million dollars just from volunteer time alone, which is really great that we've been able to engage so many people through volunteerism. I mean, and we currently have about 35 staff on payroll, and that brings in about a quarter of a million dollars' worth of salaries. Yeah, half a million, sorry, it's about $500,000 worth of salaries and wages that go back into the community. We, some accomplishments this past year, we started a licensed childcare, which was a response to community need. So, we're currently serving 18 families through Licensed Childcare Program. We started a diabetes prevention program. We formed the Cook County Youth Agency Coalition in conjunction with Community Education to meet some of the youth development needs in the community. And then we recently hired in 2015 a mentoring director, so we're kicking off a mentoring program. Right now, we actually have a drive going on right now, March into Mentoring, where we're trying to recruit 10 adult mentors to work with youth, or youth in the community. And those are some of the accomplishments that we had this past year. The next page over, this pie chart here just gives a little bit of a visual of how the revenue and the expenses were distributed over the past year. So, you can see the city of Grand Marais and the Cook County were both even this year at about 12%. And so, we were under our $200,000 subsidy this year, just shy of it. So, and you all should have a copy of the budget in your packets there, and, you know, if people have questions, we can certainly go over that. But just some highlights, membership, like I said, is really strong, and we're retaining membership. And then programs, adding childcare and some other programs this season, like camp, we were able to come in very close to that budget this year. So, we're proud of that, we're ready to go for our third year.
I'd like to take a little time just to cover some information from the roadmap, which is our strategic plan. If you could just look through that, or if you have, we'd appreciate it, but I would just like to comment about, at the bottom of that first page, our top three strategic priorities for 2016. The YMCA takes strategic planning very seriously, just in our process alone, we just sort of estimate the number of collective hours of individuals in this process, which Jan was very much a part of, and she does a great job. But we have about 240 to 250 hours collectively, what we put into developing a strategic plan. We have workshops, we're debriefing, and obviously, all of us that are council members interact with the community. So, that's somewhat of a dynamic process, we do surveys as well. So, using that data, then we go through this process. After the strategic plan, you'll just notice on page two and on the other pages, it sort of gives us the values that drive our decision-making and using SOAR analysis and so forth. So, but as a result of all that process, we have developed three strategic priorities. And we've developed those based upon what we feel the needs are of the community as well as the why. So, number one, I think Emily has mentioned, increase member retention with an emphasis on member engagement. In other words, getting more and more involvement, just not looking at the numbers, but more involvement with those memberships and providing, you know, activities that may be paid for or just part of membership. The second area is something that's, I think, maybe typical. The second area is something that's, I think, maybe typical for any new entity and new organization in dealing with facilities. We're finding, and we really appreciate, the why. I mean, the building and what you've done and your predecessors in creating this in our community, but now we're faced with some of the issues that deal with, you know, how is it going? The facility was not built to handle our membership, I think some of you are aware of that, and so, we've had some real needs coming to us from our membership specifically about some things we could do to improve the facility. So, we'd like to invite you or some representatives from the county to participate with us in that process, in some kind of task force, to start looking at long-range planning and some of the immediate needs, and some of these immediate needs are locker use design and facility. We've had one particular member that's submitting plans to us about how we could reorganize the locker room and moving lockers around and other issues to better accommodate the number of people. We're finding there's some frustration on the part of membership and how, you know, we can use that locker room facility, more so even with, I think, the females than with the men. So, we would welcome, you know, participation and really are asking you to get involved in that process as owners. And I think initially, you know, there were plans for the school district to provide equipment and, you know, resources in, as far as custodial employees, that did not materialize, so this has sort of ended up in our budget, and it's been a real challenge for Emily and Chris to see how we can keep that place clean. And so, there's a real need for a scrubber, for example, so as we get more and more into that, there's some real needs, and it's, I think also, you know, that there's this inverse rule of lack of maintenance is going to cost more money down the line, so it's in the owner's best interest to take a look at that. Another priority that has come up is the strive to meet the demanding needs of early childhood. Emily and I, as well as the council members, have been hearing from the community the dire need for childcare, especially with our toddlers and infants. I know I've been attending quite a few meetings, and the school district is also involved in this, and if we see other than, you know, the usual highway issues in the county, which we're not involved in, we're, you know, we're about social responsibility and we're mission-driven as an organization, so this has come to the front, and as we get more involved in it, we're finding that there is a dire need. Childcare facilities can't function, people can't pay their bills, or there's a waiting list to get support, and theoretically, some of these children that are on the waiting list will wait till school age to be serviced, so somewhere down the line, hopefully, we can address that, and we're willing to provide some leadership or facilitation in that process, but that's a real need, and I think it has economic development implications, as well as just social responsibility and helping young people in our community. So, with that, I'll conclude my remarks unless there's any questions.
Okay, we'll go to questions, Commissioner Seivertson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Chris, for coming, and Emily and Myron for being here today, and what great news. And also, thank you, Myron, to bring forth, you know, out of this good news creates another sexy problem, which we have to deal with, how are we going to grow and sustain what we have? And so, I don't really have any questions, I'm just really excited and really want to jump on that bandwagon to do the bigger, better things that we know we can handle now, because we've got two years under our belt, and last year was highly successful. But I also realize that highly successful came on the backs of real human beings with maternity leaves and so forth. I think our staff shortages helped to create that better bottom line, but that's not necessarily a sustainable model, so.
Thank you, recognizing that.
Yeah, yeah, that's not, yeah, so, but I'm really excited for moving forward and what we can do to solve the problems.
Commissioner, did you say sets of problems or sexy problems?
Sexy problems.
So, she called Big Butt a TV, isn't she? We need to have a talk with you about...
Commissioner's on a roll today.
What's in that coffee mug down there?
It's empty.
Just see whenever Commissioner Starley isn't here if it can follow that.
That space.
Yeah, she's on a roll. Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, know that it's challenging, and it's been noted that Emily has put out considerably to be able to diffuse some of those challenges. I guess when we are looking at the budget, previously, training staff was a commitment, and we've had some discussions about efficiencies, you know, in other areas in the state this morning, and having trained staff affects both the level of the experience as well as those efficiency issues, so recognizing the nature and rolling with those changes with staff and family and how that impacted you is, that's appreciated. My question would be on that point is, are there visible ways which both you or one of you saw that being a problem in the level of service that was provided? In other words, was the lack of our ability to follow through on what we were hoping to do with the training element, did that show up, or was that mitigated basically by the quality of staff that we had in place?
Yeah, I mean, the staff that we had at the leadership level, they've been there for two years, and they're really, they're stellar. You know, I've had some, I've had a great membership director, an awesome, healthy-living director, so, you know, I don't think that there was, I don't think that it caused a problem, but it's just really important for retention to be able to provide leadership and growth opportunities for staff, and we're actually really excited, we've got a regional training coming up that the YUSA is helping provide trainers, and a lot of our staff, including frontline staff, are going to be able to take advantage of some of those training opportunities throughout, I think one actually starts the end of this month and then all the way through June, so, you know, I think that if anything, just the quality will be elevated. I don't know that the quality was poor because we didn't have those trainings, but I think it'll just be really important for staff development and retention and staff satisfaction to be able to have those training opportunities available.
And that can't always be said, in other words, there are organizations that say we just, we had so much to do, we didn't get to the point where we could train adequately, and so we had to sort of limp along because of that, but your response indicates that that wasn't so noticeable, but that's because of the quality of staff that were in place, that's what I'm going to take from that.
I guess the, kind of the best way to answer that is that the members did not notice, the quality of service was still there, but the staff felt it, and the staff, yeah, I mean, it was, it's difficult, and they were stretched, and so, because of the support of each other, you know, none of our members suffered from the lack of staffing or the short areas, but, you know, we had many staff that took on new roles and responsibilities and hats and titles and just filled the gaps, and it's tough, but...
And part of that is the nature of new, although the YMCA has been established and has certainly learned from experience for many years, so it translates that to new ventures, but still, people need to assimilate that, you know.
I think a lot of that goes back to leadership, we're very fortunate to have Emily up here and to put her in place. If that were not to be the case, and we hired someone that wasn't a Y person at the top, then yeah, then we would have had to put expensive resources into training and development for the rest of staff, but she's been able to get people up to speed where they were. There are more programming, there are more things that we could do with greater training. There's expectations with, that comes with the Y and advancement certifications, all that kind of stuff that the staff up here are lacking right now, but I think Emily has all of that and has gone through most of that classes, so she's able to give her knowledge to the staff. But we do need to send some staff through some more training, get them a little bit more Y trained.
Well, and certainly, like the frontline positions, of course, lifeguards are going to have their certifications and their CPR and their first aid, and childcare providers have some basic level of training that they have to have in order to be certified, but we're looking above and beyond just those baseline certificates and really elevating the level of professionalism on our team, so.
Another question I have is with the early childcare, and this came before the board initially, I think we were all aware of the need that existed, and whether or not, you know, the Y was able to fill that need. I guess my question, based on Myron's comments, are to what extent have there been, you know, just taking a look and analysis of how we adapt to that need and make the Y, you know, the primary provider of that? Has there been a lot of, you know, I mean...
Yeah, can you, I'm just trying to figure out what the question...
Yeah, the question has to do with, because Myron, you were talking about, you know, looking at the, striving to meet the needs of early childcare, it's a dire need, and we identified there might be potential in our previous conversation, and now we've had an opportunity to see some of that, but how we adapt the facility and personnel to address that need if the Y in fact is the primary player, has there been study to understand how we might do that?
I'd be glad to respond to that, if you're okay with it, and you could add something. We're finding out that, you know, the Y was providing a childcare program, and you have some very complex requirements to be approved, and I don't want to elaborate on that, but that takes a long time to explain, but as we did that and got more involved, Emily and I have been meeting with various groups going all around the county, quite frankly, and we're finding out that as a Y, there's no, we cannot be a provider or a primary provider, as you mentioned, it is far more, we have private childcare facilities, you've got a nonprofit and cooperation station, we're involved in it, then you have early childhood education, and then you've got, you know, special education identification of young children that are somehow, you know, getting on the radar of services through, you know, whatever, social services or the school district. And the more time that I've spent with it, and I think Emily would reinforce this, it is far more complex than that. So, what I was alluding to is that there is a real need in the county for some kind of coordination or leadership to try to get a real good handle on this, but, and not to usurp or take away from the providers that are doing it, because they're doing it in their homes, and, you know, everything, we're assuming they're doing a great job, so, but there's still a lot of children that are falling through the cracks, and these are high-needs childrens, or maybe not necessarily so. There's some young people, young couples that we found out can't work because they can't get, you know, they, some employers require childcare, isn't necess, so there's a, the need is far more complex than we ever thought it would be, and it's going to, I think, you know, require some kind of concerted commitment by various entities to get a better handle on this and then maybe develop a model, and we would invite your support and really appreciate it through whatever vehicle we can do. So, we're thinking about what is our role in that, and it's going to require commitment on our budget, but we, as an advisory council, have pretty much set in our priorities to Emily, you know, and to the umbrella organization in Duluth, that this is a priority, so, you know, we would like to see some staffing committed to this. That has not been done. Emily's been picking up all that, and she's great, and that's her background, but, so, this has real implications for us, I think, and hopefully, you know, as well as whatever extent that the county is willing to commit to deal with it.
Last question that I have, and to Chris, is basically, it would play off of that as to Ys elsewhere and what their involvement is in early child, what we see that's worked, and at what level within the community as far as partnership, and coupled with that is the question as to, in observing, you know, the YMCA here in Cook County, with similar Ys elsewhere as far as performance and the challenges and things like that, how is it comparatively?
So, the Y is actually the biggest provider of early childhood programming in the country, and so, most Ys, new Ys that are being built have a daycare component attached to it. The Ys that I'm looking at, building right now, have significant daycares attached to it, so we are in a good position to be able to provide that. We are conveners for cities and counties around that area and leaders in that area, and I think we have the potential to do that here. There is space in the facility with some modifications that we could certainly meet more of that need, but it's going to take a little bit more of an effort, and quite frankly, I'm a little bit surprised at the amount of need there is here, we kind of thought that going in, but there's been more need everywhere. I mean, membership, I would have never dreamed that it would have been that big, and I'm a big dreamer, so, but we are well-positioned to be able to assist communities with offering early childhood, quality early childhood.
When we had visited the YMCA in Alexandria, they had a significant childcare program there, yeah, very nice setup.
The one in urban town, we're building a center for over 100 kids, it's huge.
Exciting.
Yeah, we have, an average of the centers in that area have about 40 kids on the waiting list per center.
If you look at the cost for providing the service relative to the revenue, and you can evaluate that as to programs and things that the Y offers, how much do we pay, and some, in some cases, it's a lost leader, but it's a value-added attractor, and so my point is, is that when you look at the experience with early childcare at Ys, how that program compares from the standpoint of cost versus revenue?
It has much more of an impact on the revenue side in more suburban and urban areas, because it is a recruiting tool to the overall membership of the Y.
Yeah.
In a community like this, it would be more of a lost leader, like you said, and we have what we call mission-driven programs, programs that don't make enough money, that we use our membership to subsidize that, this would be one of the programs, but we're also here to fulfill community needs, and if that's popping up as one of the largest needs, then we do our best to try and accommodate that.
Thank you.
Emily, if you could just touch on it, because it kind of sounds like we're not taking action, but you and the county and the school have already had multiple conversations about how to address this, and you've taken a lot of action, so I just want you to touch on that, so people know that we're trying.
Yep, yeah, there's a lot of current task forces and meetings, Early Childhood Coalition and the Preschool Advisory Council and the Y Advisory Council and the school, there's a lot of people that are looking at this issue right now, so these meetings will continue to happen, and we'll hopefully see some things start to unfold in the near future, yeah.
Yeah, if I could just follow up with that too, and to emphasize, you know, sometimes it comes down to finances, and what I'm at least seeing, and I think we're finding out, is that this is something that the Y cannot handle financially, it's a greater need than maybe we had just, you know, anticipated in providing childcare, so it's a larger issue than I think we previously thought, and we knew it was a big one, so, you know, yes, we're doing things, but the more we get involved, and we realize that it's going to require more collaboration from other entities other than the Y.
And those discussions have been had, we know it's huge and it's expensive and it's per square foot, per child, which puts a huge obligation on it, and so, I mean, that's part of why we haven't moved as fast, I know Emily wants it done, and let's put these kids in here and have it taken care of, and we can't, so, I mean, that's the toughest thing, if we could just write out a check, that'd be nice.
Yeah, most recently, the, you know, our advisory councils advised us to look at the infant toddler need, to continue to look at that need, because there are some other players that are looking at the preschool need a little bit more heavily, and so we think we've got the space that we, and the experience to be able to do another infant toddler program, so we're looking at that in the near future.
And infant rooms are incredibly expensive.
Yes, yes, those, yes, but important, important work, so.
Commissioner Mo?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm going to get back to this early, the childcare issue, which I think is really important, and grateful you're working on that. A couple of comments, one, I appreciate being invited in to Emily to sit down and have a lengthy discussion about my thoughts on the Y and my perceptions, what I, what I'm hearing out in our end of the county about it, and I think that was really helpful, productive discussion, so thank you for doing that. Myron stopped me also, and my brief Y visit in... Um, Myron stopped me also, and, uh, uh, my brief Y visit increased by about an hour a few weeks ago, and we had a lengthy discussion too, and I was glad for that, um, yeah, the budget is, is definitely going in the right direction, I'm really grateful for your stewardship there, I know our taxpayers are too, um, so thank you for that. Specifically, our discussions have been on serving the, the constituents in the east end of the county, and it's, it's a lot further for them to get to the Y, um, some of the services that you provided at that facility, um, because of distance, aren't available to them, and as we've discussed, they're paying into, um, the cost of the facility too, you've expressed interest in reaching out to, uh, people who live in the east end of the county, which I'm grateful for, and specifically, um, childcare is, is a huge need there, uh, as we've shared with each other, and, and I'd like you to comment on, um, your thoughts on, on, um, possibly, I know it's, it's not, it's going to be difficult, there's facility issues, whatever, but, but, but at least starting to, um, figure out how to address that need, and specifically, I'd like to know, like, we actually need a group of people to get together and start talking about it, um, do you want me to call that meeting, or?
There's, there's, there is a group already that includes the city and the county and the school.
Well, but not specifically focused on east end though, is that what you mean?
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know Hillary, Hillary and-
Yeah, and I'd like, so how, so how will, how do you envision this proceeding, or you can comment however you want, but I just, you obviously get my question here.
Yeah, and, um, at one of our upcoming advisory council meetings, that's one of the things that we need to do, is look through our strategic plan and see if there's, um, any task force type groups that, um, develop from that, or seem, um, logical based on that, and what some of our priorities and goals are to expand programming in other areas of the county, um, definitely this childcare issue, so I would encourage, um, somebody from east end, probably maybe you Frank, to serve on one of those task force groups that focus on childcare, and we can look at facilities out there, and I know Hillary wasn't able to be here today, but she's, um, our rep from kind of the east end, and she wanted to pass on that we are at least looking at some programming up there, starting in June, um, kind of a healthy family home, some, not, not ECFE, but some early childhood, some family, um, activities focused on healthy eating and activities, and so, um, that'll be at least a good start to get into that area and start meeting people and hearing about their needs and checking out facilities, um, but I would say we could certainly invite Frank, if, on one of those task forces that develops.
Yes, there, you know, there is this early childhood coalition, then there's a parent, which is basically sawtooth, uh, preschool, that, that attend the preschool program, early childhood, uh, education, and, and then there really isn't another entity that I'm aware of that's specifically addressing, you know, childcare, especially infant and toddler, and that I think is, you know, where there needs to be more focus, and, and maybe that is something that, that another task force could be developed, and definitely, we know there's needs, and, you know, Emily and I have met with some people down in the west end, and there's a need there, and it's, employers are concerned about it, and, and looking at that issue, but also, we've heard in Holland, there's a lot of need there for, I think there's like eighteen children there, uh, in that community, so, um, so I think, I would be glad to work with, with you and Emily as well as, okay, how can we direct more focus to a specific task force or committee to deal with this early childhood component younger than three?
So, Chris, maybe you can-
I'm fully talking to you about it.
We'll talk.
Yeah, thank you.
Maybe you can answer this one, there's been, um, I've had a couple of comments, because we have the one percent tax that pays for the facility, we have the city and county contributing, and so then I had someone, "And then they're out asking me for more money," so, that's the model of the YMCA, so if we could just kind of touch on how we as Cook County compare to other facilities, it's hard because you have the assistance from the city and the county into this, but in general, your model is to fundraise, so if you could kind of touch on how we compare, because I know you've got the funding source percentage in here.
Right, so, um, this Y actually exists in the smallest community in the country, as far as having a traditional facility, and it's probably by two or three times the next size community that has a Y, um, so the subsidy is significantly higher than your traditional Ys, but we knew that coming in, um, also with our model of fundraising, uh, the breakdowns, uh, we look at the three big areas of revenue, it's membership programs and fundraising, uh, you want your fundraising to be about ten to fifteen percent, uh, than your programs and membership, you can divide that out, membership tends to be, um, higher than the program, so we're pretty close, uh, within those, those rates, um, you know, when I was coming up here earlier and talking the significance about the Y as opposed to just a community center, and that is because we can't, uh, fundraise, and, uh, we could just do bare bones around the pool and the gym, but that wouldn't be a Y, so to be able to get the programming that we need, um, into the community, you know, we need to fundraise, we need those extra dollars, we need the training, that kind of stuff, so, um, ratio-wise, we're pretty comparative, uh, as far as the percentages in the revenue breakdown, uh, subsidy is significantly higher than most Ys.
Okay, and all of that fundraising stays local and helps for local families?
Yeah, there was about forty thousand dollars last year in scholarships, um, ten alone for, um, summer kids camp program for kids on free and reduced lunch, um, and then, um, scholarships for membership of all different types, active older adults, single-parent families, youth, um, and then programs, a lot of our scholarships go into programs like the dance program and gymnastics and swim lessons and swim team and, um, quality youth programs like that, so, we wouldn't be able to offer those types of scholarships without the support of our contributors, um, because we have to be able to offset those scholarships, we can't just give, give things away, so.
So percentage-wise, compared to our other four branches, this branch actually already in year two raises more money than our other four branches, dollar amounts they raise more, but percentage to that annual, uh, budget, this raises the most.
So just easy translation for the public, because a lot of times people think, oh, when they're fundraising, it's so that they can have a bigger salary, so when I donate my hundred or a thousand dollars a year, that means five or ten kids get to be a part of a program, or an adult who's unable to afford it, it, it goes back to that, which to me means a lot, so. Commissioner Gamble, I'll give your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, um, I, I, and I appreciate the asking the question, Commissioner DuKirk, um, it gives context for understanding, um, and I think that was one of the big challenges initially, was just given, you know, how small a community we have, is how are we going to be able to do this, uh, having said that, in, in trying to understand that in a broader context than just Cook County, that if, if you look at Grand Portage and their community center up there, and when I talked to their director, it was like, the only way this happens is that, that the tribal council makes a commitment to make this happen, because they feel it has value, you know, to our community, and so, um, making those subsidies in things where it makes, you know, makes sense as to the value that it creates, relative to early childhood, we, we in the county, and we're not unique in this, have many discussions about affordable housing, workforce housing, all of these issues, and it seems like we go on and on and on and on, and, and those issues that are primary issues, if, if, if the people that are the players, looking at, you know, the remoteness of our county, we have Birch Grove that's, you know, working with that, and, uh, they're faced with that challenge, so, my, my point is, is that if we assemble the people that want to have a voice at the table, and we look at this, and the YMCA can be a leader in helping facilitate that, because of their experience and their success in that regard, there's a, there's a lot of compliance requirements that, it's not just a matter of opening up a building and having kids show up, and so we, we need that kind of structure and perspective in that discussion, but it would be good if we take the people, if this is the problem that we've identified, let's not continue to walk around with a pebble in the shoe, let's try to get the people together and allow this to be facilitated, so we can contribute to something that informs the decision and a response to it, we need to be more proactive, and, you know, it's, it's unfair to me to make that statement without appreciation for what is being done, it's just that we'd like to see more profiles, so the community feels that there is a, an active response.
Yeah, one of the things about being the Y is when you do convene those groups of people, we have extensive curriculum and people trained, um, you know, at my level and national levels that could come in and help do that, so all we got to do is ask and get them in and strategic planning, um, convening for stuff like this, early childhood, uh, that kind of stuff, so don't hesitate to ask, we'd be glad to come in and help.
And I, and I think that, uh, there's a huge benefit, not only for what it provides for families, but also given, given the challenges and the perception, just as Commissioner DuKirk pointed out, his perceptions, that the more that the substance of the value of the Y is evident in our community, the more it affirms its value, so.
I agree.
Emily's also trained in strategic planning, and we've already honed in on her, and we're going to have her help us a little bit with strategic planning.
She trained in, Emily.
It's nothing.
Well, she doesn't have a degree in knee whacker, but-
Knee whacker?
I don't know.
Commissioner, if I could go back to the subsidies and the fundraising that you were talking about, one of the analogies that I look when a facility has subsidies is that they're subsidized, and, and you add fundraising into that, is that, and I know most of you are members of the Y, so really, every one of you are having your membership and your program fees subsidized, because we're not making enough to break even, the county's subsidizing it, so, so you're right, it doesn't go back into cover salaries and stuff like that, it really does go in to offset the losses of programming and membership that we're not raising, because we're trying to keep our fees at a reasonable level.
You know, the only thing that the community's going to pull out of that sentence is that the, the community's subsidizing the commissioners' memberships, that's going to be the translation that comes out somewhere, so.
Give that, Brian.
We're equally subsidizing everybody.
He's writing it down.
Verishly. Anything else for these guys? Thank you so much, Chris, for driving up and-
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
I didn't swear at this meeting, so we're-
Thank you, Myron, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here's my say, year two to, to commit to our break-even budget, so we're excited that the process is, seems to be sustainable, it's razor-thin, and, and a lot of that is due to leadership, strong leadership, but, um, we have a model I think is going to be successful for generations, so thank you.
And Jan, thank you so much for all your work on our council, and I'm sure a lot of you will be solicited for different task forces in the near future, so we look forward to continuing to work with you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a fifteen-minute break.
Okay. All right.
I think it's me.
Glenn and Jake have pulled up, put such a different report in.
Oh, yeah, no. Leadership rules, aren't we?
How are you?
I'm okay, I gotta go.
I know.
We actually have a six-hour day.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we need, we need to-
You guys share, you follow us?
Nobody's gonna ever help us, um, they, they do this every year to take input from real use of government, and I've heard from the council, so, tell them what we think.
Implementing a new HR.
But we'll train you, they're like, how to tell them.
I'm really too busy to do it, but I want to do it, I want to start this year.
Well, it is a commitment.
It is a commitment, but we need to-
A lot of time connected, so.
I don't want to group.
Talking to, uh, YUSA that kind of oversees this region, and, um, he's excited.
Yeah.
And it's a whole lot of work, anyway.
We do have, we do have-
That's what I tell people when I cooperate.
Subsidizing, subsidizing, I'm not really too into it.
In a small community, activity and services, what we have.
The only thing I, I would be willing to-
You want a lot of them?
Yes, he does too.
Sometimes it is, you might ask for his perspective on-
And that's what I'm hoping to find, is like, is this worker's coming or is, you know, how we, I think this one is, we get straight up there, that'll be a lot of respectful volunteers to-
I think we're finding out.
Oh, I've heard he hears about it in the other counties.
Yeah.
I'd go, I'd go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I do, because I have a six-year kid, she's on day two, she's on day two, and promised to work all day yesterday.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, basically, I think the last thing that we have is-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just talking to Frank about that, I don't, there's nothing that I have that's really urgent to address.
Well, Alon's, they're day two, and I was like, you know, do it there.
I wish my parents were here.
Oh, your parents?
They're, they're-
The grandparents' childcare assistance program.
Yes, yes.
So, we all-
Yeah.
I'm going to take a shot at answering the phone.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Yeah, you're right, they're pretty important, yeah, you know, because I'm a, I'm a, I throw, my work's up there, I got, I got, Elchinos, and, yeah, I use them, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they can use them, you know, the old peanut music.
Yes.
So, do you ever go to, um, the place in the Doitsites Building, the, um, the sandwich shop, the fish shop?
I see that, I've never tried one.
Awesome.
Really?
I like the constitution, yeah, so really, you know, I mean, this is-
If we're visiting something like a Geo Math or something, that we should spend-
Yeah, right next to me.
You know, I'm going to catch a, I find a spot, you know, it's not like, I went to one, it's my favorite, I know, yeah, yeah.
This is really good.
I bet it is, yeah, I think I'm just going to-
The fact that I still have all of them is absolutely amazing to this point.
I am.
I have tried to cut that one off several times. It just won't stay.
I worked with a one handed welder for Mora. He told me why I made a mistake that cost us some time and money and he was dang-
Not as likely as crab day, you know.
Well, that's the one.
You don't like that for entertainment?
It prevents a little crab attack.
Please match that. Able to hold on. If you've never made a mistake, what happened to that?
Too much sugar.
Yeah, the downside.
I got a hold from online meetings and whatnots one night at like 8 o'clock. Then on Facebook, just don't know if I want to cry or laugh right now. And Jordan got on, she was me hates Hollins. I'm gonna dirty my electronic devices and I'm like here, take these for a while.
Yeah.
Well, the rubber bush washing was inside my robe.
Yeah, so my phone has been broken and I've been trying to get this. But you're supposed to pull this over. I was having trouble getting reading. Ready to sell it. You're getting one.
Yeah, I figured that was a primary concern. Other people all don't know.
April left a message at my house yesterday and said I'll be down till 4:30. Breaking, I go back and forth and no one answers, but I'm on roller.
Yeah. That's not what I think I'm saying.
Usually I'm directing a conversation and I'm pressing emails and so he's like, what is she talking about?
Well, sometimes, and I do this too, you say something abruptly in email and it has more of a-
And I also don't finish sentences when I answer them. And then I look at him like, oh, I can see why you're a little annoying to me right now. I only want to know because you sent an email and somebody else sent one to both of us and I responded, I agree with Frank. And I agree with most of what Frank said, half the meeting, then personally.
Oh.
And I'm like, dang it. Rats.
How'd that go?
Fabulous.
Really?
No.
What do we have left?
Mr. Nolan psychic.
Oh, that's right.
I'm sure that he's gonna love coming in because every time I see him, I'm like, that'd be nice if Mr. Nolan actually showed up to Cook County himself.
Has Ray Nolan come up to Cook County?
He's made a couple appointments and canceled them.
No, he never has.
Nope.
He never has?
Nope.
Well, we've gotten him at eight percs.
I told Mark a long time ago, like three years ago, I said, you know, it's really nice to see you, but I'd rather see-
Yeah, no, he knows, you know, Mark knows too. Yeah, I don't know why he doesn't. We don't have enough votes, I'm guessing.
We might be small, but we're powerful.
Oh, yeah.
Malefique.
Sexy.
We just have sexy TVs. We have big butted TVs, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it's about.
Yeah. What's that?
The Mills is running again.
He's been running against him. He's not gonna vote for Santi.
Now that he sold the Mills Fleet Farm, he might have enough money to run.
It's the haircut that did it.
It's the haircut.
Yeah, he cut his hair.
You seen Mills shooting facility in Brainerd?
His what?
Their shooting facility in Brainerd.
I thought you said something else. I'm like, this is out of control again.
Indoor 50 yard range, indoor archery range. It's a spectacular facility. And I went in there, they gave me the tour, let me go through the shooting bays and all that. That community is supporting the crap out of that thing and I can't get over it.
Where's that one at again?
It's right by Coles.
It's right across the street from the Fleet Farm. It's an unbelievable facility. If you have to go to Brainerd, I would definitely-
I have not yet come up with a reason to go to Brainerd.
Stop in there.
I was there last week, but I didn't have a chance. Oh, yeah, you were there, yeah.
I was there, yeah. Don't get the county suit thing.
Yeah, that's all right. What happens in Brainerd stays in Brainerd.
Yeah.
I hope I want to go there. I'll be kind of sad because it's probably better than going to the pit.
Yeah, we need a shooting.
Oh, it's a very nice facility.
Well, it is and it isn't. There's a little-
I get really angry when I go to the pit though. Cameras on, you people that leave your trash in the pits, you're really irritating me.
Well, what else you gonna shoot?
No, I take garbage bags with-
Alcohol and shoot. You need something to shoot at.
I take garbage bags with me to the pit and I clean it up before we even start. It dries dirty bottles.
Yeah, you need bottles. You need something.
You do not shoot bottles. If you want to shoot cans, fine, but pick them up.
Don't want that one down 61 here?
No, up that.
Pick roll, pick roll. Where I sunk my battleship.
I don't think I've been there. There's a lot of pits in this county, yeah.
There is. And I'm sure the other ones are dirty too.
Not ours.
I'm not talking about the gravel.
This, Heidi, you are so missing out.
Just rub it in, babe, rub it in. I was explaining this to him the other day. I have not had allergies my whole life. That's why it's so horrible because I know what it tastes like.
What do you have allergies to?
Dairy soy and gluten, that whole thing.
Wow, that would suck.
It does. I have broken into tears at restaurants because I'm like, it's not fair.
I'm sorry.
I have not heard from Mark since he set this up three weeks ago to be here at 10:30 today.
Well, if he doesn't show up, then we'll just-
I have not seen him. He's supposed to have a luncheon somewhere today and I'm supposed to be meeting with him together too.
We have to put something together for WTAV. The fact that they're totally here for a party this morning.
I like them. You got my vote.
So we have time to-
I'm not one of those that won't tell you what I think.
Really? Raised in the family you were raised in.
What are you picking on your family?
I eat breakfast with the dad. As long as there isn't any other locals, that would be more compatible with-
He watches, you know.
He'll look around and it'll be like, ah, all right. And he comes over, he sits with me.
So he got to know my dad a little bit.
Your dad has the greatest smile.
It is funny because he does, he looks around too and he-
All right, I'll sit with Stan.
I'll sit with Stan. Even, oh, why can't I think of his name right now? The letter to the editor dude, Todd Sylvester. Todd and I had breakfast, Todd and Mike, your dad and I had breakfast the other morning.
Will he sit down with Todd before you?
No, we were all kind of together.
You're sitting with, he's sitting with the other?
It was really kind of a funny day.
Me shy resident guys.
Right? Bringing a recorder to that thing, huh?
Has your dad ever written a letter to the editor?
Oh, heavens no.
But does he have opinions?
Yes. Who doesn't have opinions? Everybody's got an opinion. So you think maybe he's not coming?
I haven't heard anything since he originally scheduled this more than three weeks ago.
Fact that we don't see him. You think he would have called, fixed it or something?
I went in and checked my voicemail and made sure there's nothing on my phone, there's nothing on my email.
I get picked on for my promptness all the time, but people want to sit and watch us eat for five minutes.
I was calling him every day. How you feeling today, Dad?
Yeah. I guess we start and just round it out. Okay, we will call the meeting back to order after a little break there. As much as we're cracking jokes, Mark is not here yet. Not quite sure if he got stuck in traffic. It's very busy on 61. So we'll go into employee anniversaries. Teresa Oberg, six years with Soil and Water. Warren Hagan, lovingly known as Festus, with Roden Bridge, 10 years. William Lane, known as Bill or Willie, with our planning and zoning, another 10 years. Barbara Assmussen, 24 years in public health. I know it's amazing when you look at these. Courtney Bernier, 22 years in the auditor's office. David Demmer, eight years of planning and zoning. Rena Rogers, two years was our director in IT. And Jonathan Baumann, one of my lovely local fellows up on the trail. So nice celebrating his first year with the county. So that's it for anniversaries. We could take this opportunity to share our feelings about politics and things without Mark here, but it's probably not necessary.
I got really nervous.
I would like to go on the record is it would be nice to see Congressman Nolan come to Cook County.
Okay.
Since he supposedly represents us in Washington, so it'd be nice to see him here.
I second that.
Yeah.
Can we get it all in favor? All right. So, extend your invitation. So it's unfortunate that we missed Mark today and Mr. Nolan. They're both very busy people. So with that, could we adjourn?
Motion adjourn, Madam Chair. Support.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.